From he doesn't miss church or any of his meetings at church and he doesn't miss any of these. I don't know how he does it, but he's able to do it. Here in North Carolina, we have 11 historically black colleges and universities. And they for a time were struggling before being taken by the state. And so as a graduate of a historically black college, Fayetteville State College, I was there when it was a college. Shut up Glenn. I was there when it was a college before it ever became a university. But we find ways to honor our graduates. Statewide, there is one medal that is given to designate the fact that you are a living legend. On August 26th Chairman Glenn Adams was honored as a 2017 HBCU Living Legend during a scholarship gala in Winston-Salem. As part of the tribute, he's featured in a calendar with all his clothes on. He's featured in a calendar that showcases outstanding alumni from the 11 historically black colleges and universities in North Carolina. This honor celebrates the achievements of alumni who are having an impact on our cities, counties, states, the nation, and the world. And one goal is to show youth the breadth and depth of achievers who graduate from HBCUs. Chairman Adams is a Fayetteville native. He is a graduate of E.E. Smith High School. Go Bulls. He received his Bachelor of Arts degree from North Carolina State University. His Juris Doctorate from North Carolina Central University School of Law. He attended a summer session at Oxford University in England. He is an attorney. He is my partner on, from my district, in District One. He has been a commissioner since 2014. He has caused me to run to keep up with him. And I am going to officially present him with his award again. Oh, thank you.
And I do thank you. It was a grand occasion, but you know, it was a HBCU Living Legend. And I will tell you that there's always a place for HBCUs, not only in North Carolina, but in the nation. But I don't get this award by myself. It's because of the people that came before me. My mother who went to Fayetteville State. She went to A&amp;T. My sister who went to Elizabeth City State University. And my wife who went to North Carolina Central. My son who went to North Carolina Central. My daughter that graduated from Spelman is now a doctor down in Atlanta. And my daughter who is currently enrolled in Spelman. And my son who is in law school at North Carolina Central. HBCUs are part of our family. I served on the Board of Trustees for North Carolina Central, serving the last two years as trustee, as chairman. It is important. And they have a place in America. And I would encourage everybody to contribute, to donate, and to keep that dream alive. But I do thank this board for recognizing me this morning. Thank you all. It's because of sitting up here with you all that part of this award. So this award belongs to you as much as it belongs to me. So thank you all so very much. And to the staff and to the employees. So thank you. And while I'm down here, let me call up the county manager. It is recognition day and, good morning. Our Cumberland County Manager Amy Cannon has been appointed to the Financial Services Center Advisory Committee of the National Association of Counties, which is called NACO, which creates and delivers transformative solutions to public entities. The financial services program focuses on purchasing, retirement, finance, and healthcare. Well, what does all that mean? NACO is a national association. And it means that Cumberland County is still rising to the top with its staff and its employees. And they see the talent that comes out of this community. And that talent is in our county manager, Ms. Cannon. She's also an ICMA International City County Management Association Credentials Manager. You don't get that just by looking pretty, even though she does. She has been the Cumberland County Manager since 2014 after serving as the Deputy County Manager for three years and the Assistant County Manager for Finance and Administrative Services for 11 years. That's why they're clapping over there in the corner over there. They come out of the finance. In addition, she's been with Cumberland County for 27 years and was the county's Finance Director for 15 years. Ms. Cannon is a Fayetteville native and 71st High School graduate. Go Falcons. She is a Certified Public Accountant and a North Carolina Certified Government Finance Officer. She was appointed by the NACO President, Roy Charles Brooks, and has been invited to participate in the serving of, in serving the underserved counties addressing poverty initiative that includes a poverty summit in December, excuse me, in Fort Worth, Texas. That is the new initiative by our President of NACO. I think he said from the crib to three is the initiative that had, that we did at the last national convention. I present to you Ms. Amy Cannon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm very honored to have this opportunity to serve on a national committee. I look forward to the opportunity to represent Cumberland County on this committee. So thank you very much.
All right. I will call on the county manager for any changes to the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I would ask under closed session, if we could add an Economic Development Session, please.
Any objection? Then we will add that to number seven, Economic Development. With that, I will seek the approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
There's a consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
It's been moved in second. You've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We will have a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I will call on the county manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Jackson, to give some background information on the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will mention that joining us this morning, we also have Mr. Rick Benton with the North Carolina Governor's Disaster Recovery Office. And Dee Taylor with our Community Development Department. And also, as mentioned previously, Mr. Victor Sharp with City of Fayetteville Community Development Office. Some of you may remember this presentation from a previous committee meeting. Going to add some more detail to it and let you know where things stand this morning. It has moved along very rapidly. And we have a new deadline that we're working towards. We originally had thought we had until October 1st to submit a final proposal to the state. But that deadline changed to September 15th. So things have changed on us and we're adjusting accordingly. As has been mentioned previously, the program in question comes from HUD. And it's mainly intended for low to moderate income folks. This is a grant that comes down from the federal government to the state. And the declared counties are the sub recipients. There were four counties with the highest impact. We happen to be one of those counties from Hurricane Matthew. And we're basically relying on the state's action plan to guide where we can head with the funds that'll be coming down from the federal government to the state and to the local counties and cities. There's some other criteria that will determine how the money can be distributed and what it can go towards. The first thing is the North Carolina CDBG-DR Action Plan. The Low to Moderate Income Criteria from HUD. And then, as you may recall, we worked together with a number of different groups, had a number of different public meetings and different workshops to develop a resilient redevelopment plan that focused on the major needs and unmet needs in Cumberland County as a result of Hurricane Matthew. Funding priorities. Affordable housing is the number one priority. That's per the state's action plan. And that's divided into several different categories. As you can see, the list there, some of it may go directly to homeowners. Some of it may be in terms of assistance to landlords for rental housing repairs and reconstruction. Some of it may go towards multifamily new construction. Some towards public housing and some towards supportive housing and services. There's also the potential for funds for economic recovery for small businesses and for public infrastructure and facilities. To be specific, in this area in particular, because there's always lots of questions when it comes to public infrastructure, this is really geared more towards types of programs or services that impacted low to moderate income folks. So it could be more along the lines of community centers, schools, those types of things, if those areas were impacted by the disaster. Not so much dams and other types of infrastructure. So, again, the number one priority is affordable housing. So how much aid is anticipated? At this point, from what we know, about $35 million coming down to Cumberland County. That's 22% of the grant that is actually awarded for the hardest hit counties. And you can see the breakdown in terms of the other dollars that are going towards the other three counties that were hit the hardest from Hurricane Matthew. This program's going to be administered by the county as a lead. Because we're in a little bit of a unique situation in that the city of Fayetteville has a HUD entitlement program through its Community Development Agency. And the county has a HUD entitlement program through its Community Development Agency. It is possible and it's something that we're pursuing, the possibility of actually having two different entitlement programs that'll address the different needs locally. So Cumberland County would include all the incorporated area plus the small towns outside the city of Fayetteville. The city of Fayetteville, of course, is its own jurisdiction if the state agrees with that process. We've been working together with the county and city to identify and prioritize projects. We've leaned heavily on the two Community Development Departments as they tend to be the experts in that area as far as local needs when it comes to affordable housing. And we've also been talking with our local municipalities to try to determine if they have needs or ideas when it comes to this program. As far as the draft project proposal, what we've done right now, we've looked at a lot of different areas. We've talked about rehabilitation, repair, reconstruction, and development of housing needs. Could be single-family, multifamily, maybe supportive in nature. So it could go as far as even addressing homeless needs in the community if that's agreed upon. Could be funds for small business recovery. In general, we're looking at 535 housing units and the potential to assist somewhere in the neighborhood of a homeless population of 100 folks. And we'll go through a breakdown here in just a few minutes. But we're looking at approximately, as far as what's laid out on paper right now, proposed 23 million for the city projects and 11 million for county projects. We talked about the benefit to low to moderate income folks. Just looking at HUD's objectives, it's broken down into different areas. I think that really the main purpose of this lot is just to let you know that we look at low to moderate income needs, but also areas that may be defined by slum and blight. And also any urgent remaining needs. Even though we're a year out post hurricane, there are still a lot of needs out there. As far as a limited clientele, again, this, as we see typically with post-disaster grants, as time goes on, there tends to be more restrictions, more limitations put in place. This program, again, to emphasize, is intended for low to moderate income folks. They have, at least 51% of the residents in the area have to be low to moderate income. As far as housing, property occupied by low to moderate income residents. If it's jobs, 51% of those permanent jobs created or retained have to benefit low to moderate income residents. And the most important part that folks want to know about is the income limit, which is 80% of area median income. And for a four-person household, that's $41,850. So we talked about the project summary. Lot of different areas that can reach out and touch folks here in the community in terms of potential projects. What's proposed right now, as you can see there, single-family, homeownership reconstruction or rehabilitation in the different amounts and the different units. I won't go through these in great detail at this point other than to say we have identified a lot of different needs and are proposing many different types of approaches to address those needs throughout the community. And again, trying to hit as many households as we can with the dollars that are available. I know there's been some question, I remember it wasn't that long ago we were discussing this in committee, Mount Sinai Homes. Anything that is to be done or approached in terms of reconstruction, rehabilitation, it's going to have to be proved to be something that is not going to be prone to disaster again in the future. Okay? So either it's got to be mitigated today or it's got to be mitigated in the future before these funds can be dedicated to that. So that's something that we take very seriously. This is just identifying needs. And it is something that still needs to be discussed and will have to be determined by the state and local officials based on, is it a project that's viable? And it is not going to be a high-risk project in terms of what is being proposed. Again, looking at multifamily housing, some nonspecific right now, just identifying the need. And then in terms of supporting housing, supportive housing services, small business recovery, community recovery programs. You see the options there as far as possibilities. You may have more questions as we go through this. But our timeline, we've submitted our initial proposal. That was more of a draft proposal. We have planned and provided some public meeting sessions just to give folks information. We've already had one. That was August 24th. We'll have another one September 7th at DSS at 7 o'clock. We were required to do two public hearings. One of those was done at a city council meeting. And of course, today is our second public hearing, the Commissioners Meeting. With our formal proposal due September 15th, as has been mentioned. So I'm sure you have questions and be glad to try to entertain those. If I can't answer those, then we have assistance with Mr. Benton and Ms. Taylor.
Commissioner Boos.
I think it's great. My major concern is it looks like it's now about $34 million. Was that a jump from the original projection?
No, sir. It was 34.7 was what we anticipated.
All right. What is the HUD or the definition working for of the range of what is low to moderate? I mean, what's the number? Is it based on family, property destroyed, income, combination of all? What's the, you know, how do we know that Marshall does and Jimmy doesn't qualify?
Right. And if I can, I'd like to have Dee Taylor explain that a little more detail since she's the expert when it comes to HUD.
Good morning.
Good morning. As far as income qualifications, for these projects, the applicants must qualify either based on the area benefit, which basically means that in a particular area or census tract or block group, out of the population, at least 51% of the total population within that census tract must be, must have income at or below 80% of the area median income. For each individual household that is seeking assistance, again, their income must fall at or below 80% of the area median income. So just to give you an example, a one-person household, for a one-person household, the total household income cannot exceed $29,300. A two-person household would be $33,500. And a three-person household, $37,700. And again, these are income limits that are established by HUD.
Pretty good.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, very. I had no idea where it was. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Evans? Is that the 80% or is that the full amount? Is that the full amount or is that an 80%? So the 29.9 is the threshold? Or is that with the 80% of another number?
80% of the area median income, which is about $52,000 for our area.
Okay. $52,000 for a family of four or?
That's the area. For a family of four, that would be $41,850.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I jumped.
That's okay.
But I'm just trying to get my numbers right.
Sure.
So $51,000, so the real number's like 60 and 80% of that is $51,000?
The number of, well, the percentage is from the area median income for our area, which is about $52,000. So 80% of that, $52,000.
Okay. I got what I needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jackson, as far as the homeless situation is concerned, the homeless housing and things in that, could you be a little more specific on what you're going to do? I saw where you had 100 units planned. Is there anything?
Not 100 units. It's a possibility to help 100 individuals.
100 individuals.
So that could be transitional housing. That could be emergency housing. Could be supportive services. I know the city is interested in a day center. So those are the types of things that have been discussed so far.
Okay. And I might have missed it and I'm sure you probably told us. But the funding that is going to help these individuals get back into their homes or get to a place where they need to live, when is that going to take place? When will that take place that they actually get the funding?
Right. Are you talking about, you're talking about from this particular grant?
Yes.
Okay. That's a challenging question to answer. And I will say that because we are in a process involving agencies and entities that we have no control over. So we meet deadlines when we're asked to meet deadlines. I can tell you, based on discussions that I've been involved with, that the state seems to have an urgency in terms of pushing this money down and out to the counties. And there is a great deal of interest in getting it out to the communities as quickly as possible. Now, with that being said, I can't tell you how quickly. But at least from what I've seen and heard on the state's part and on the federal government's part, they want this done sooner than later. Which is why we've seen some changes in deadlines and efforts that we've been involved with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boos.
Yeah. Picked up on a couple phrases. It seemed like most of this was towards recovery. This is like if you were impacted by the hurricane, but it's not going to be towards somebody like moving here from Charlotte and opening up a rescue boat business in the area and getting the money for something like that. It's something that has already happened to somebody, right? It's not for innovative new programs or anything.
Well, you know, there was an emphasis expressed to us in terms of trying to be innovative, trying to be creative. But again, it's all geared towards, mostly geared towards the priority of the state and federal government, which is?
Recovery.
HUD's priority, affordable housing.
Oh, okay.
So always try to take people back to where they're looking at. The biggest impact they're trying to have is upon affordable housing. So it may be folks that were displaced. It may be folks that had damages. But it could also mean construction of a new facility or structure to provide housing for people that have needs in the community related to affordable housing.
All right. Now, I know there couldn't be any problem at all between the city and the county just governing this perfectly. But is it going to be, something like, like today has to be considered a public presentation via the county and you've had one by way of the city. What about when an actual bid for something comes up? Does she have to go over and see the city and get a nod off if it's in the city or a nod off of the entire $34.7 million? I mean, how, what's the governance on, who cuts the checks, in other words?
Right. Right. So we have to develop a process and the county has to be the lead in this in terms of providing the administration for this money. So we've looked at two different approaches. One, we know that we need a consultant to help us with this project. So we're developing an RFP to, a joint RFP with the city and county. Somebody that knows and understands CDBG-DR and HUD in greater detail than we do. So that's the first thing. So the next part is the actual construction. If construction needs to take place, demolition, that type of thing. So then there'd be a separate contract for folks that can provide the actual work. So you'll have a process in place where projects will be lined out, to be monitored, to be managed. And then checks will be cut based upon established timelines and contracts.
Well, that's what I'm saying. When stuff is let, does Amy get to approve Adams Construction Company? Or does Amy and the city manager have to get together and prove the RFPs? I mean, that's what I'm saying. Who decides? That's where we always seem to, we always have these great ideas and then when it comes down to actually who gets to make the call, cut the check, make the decision, give somebody the good news, the bad news. And that's when we go like, well, that's bad news. That's y'all. Good news, we get to do it.
Right. So part of our process will involve hands-on with the county government and the city government in terms of who does what. We may have to bring that back at certain points for different approvals. But the intent is to have a blanket process in place for construction so that those folks that want to be contractors are pre-approved and they're lined up and ready to go.
Commissioner Boos, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Was this?
And I ask this question because the city does have a different process than we did. They just got the statute approved in terms of what they do on low bidder. We don't have that. And it's ultimately, my reading of this, and I know it's the city-county, that if any of these funds, if they go through a process that's not necessarily approved by us, that we ultimately, HUD's coming back to us for anything that the city does, even though they get the money if they don't do it right or don't do with that, then it comes back to us. Is that correct?
It's, the county is the lead. So the county is the entity that will be determining the processes and.
And that's because we'd have to pay the money back. The city, if the city messed up, they wouldn't have to pay the money back. The county has to come out of its coffers. That's the bottom line. I think that's what Mr. Boos is trying to get to. Is that governance has to be, if we're going to do it that way, we really need to have, and we need to send the documents. If we're the lead, I think it's incumbent upon us to draft the documents, do the documents, and make sure that everything's done before a check is cut. I don't have any concern. I think community development over the city has done a tremendous job over all the years. I think we've got my neighbor here, Mr. Sharp. But at the end of the day, I think in the fiduciary duty, we have to make sure, because we are the ones that's going to be on the hook for that. I've got a couple other questions, but I'm going to defer.
Thank you, sir. Just a little bit of a follow-up on yours. But thank you. That's my concern. Not slamming either ours or theirs or overly praising either one. It's just when it really comes down to it, what if there are two different ideas? There's a great multi-housing project to be done on Block A, intersection of Main Street. And then the city wants to do Block B, intersection of C Street. You know, and we go like, well, there's only so much money left. Which one are we going to do? Who decides? That's what I'm trying to figure out. And I think Mr. Adams, Chairman, came up with the fact that, you know, they can pitch for it, but whoever has to sign off on it would be the county. And one more last thing. What does this, it says here, the jobs, 51% of them had to be permanent jobs. Where does the funding come for this when the $34 million runs out? If they're permanent jobs, 34 million? If they're permanent jobs, $34 million is done, where does the income to pay 51% of permanent jobs? Who pays those salaries after the $34 million's gone? Is this an ongoing grant?